Yes. You're ready to go.
Okay.
Eight thirty-two.
All right, good morning. Eight thirty-two on Tuesday, April twenty-one. This is the regular meeting of the Town and New Canaan Board of Selectment. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to start by just having a brief moment of silence for our twenty-one, perhaps now twenty-two New Canaan victims of this COVID virus or coronavirus. And I'd also like to note, as many of you know, that our own superintendent of schools, Dr. Brian Lutze's father passed away over the weekend after only four days of illness, so of COVID. So this is a very sad time, and I'd just like to take a few moments to remember these victims. Thank you. Okay. First item on the agenda are the minutes of our prior last regular meeting on April seven. Do we have any comments or corrections in the minutes?
Not here.
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second year.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Use hands, okay, thank you. Actually, I haven't checked for comments yet. We're taking public comments by email. And have you seen any public comments this morning? I haven't been able to check my email in the past ten minutes. Have you seen any? If anybody's watching this on channel seventy-nine, we'll extend the comment period throughout the meeting. Since this is a rather new process, but you can make comments about agenda topics. If you provide you need to email them to b o s distribution at newcanaanct.gov. That's B O S distribution, all one word, at newcanaanct.gov. And we will read the comments if we receive any. Okay, next item on the agenda is the appointment filling a vacancy on the Police Commission. Shakiba Bennett was presented to us by the we actually got two candidates from the Democrat Town Committee. And I think Kit knows Shakiba well, and Nick and I both spoke to Shakiba. And unfortunately, I guess we didn't invite Shakiba to be on this call, but I'm very happy to nominate the first female member of the New Canaan Police Commission. And as we did with the Fire Department with Beth Jones, and I think it's about time in two thousand twenty to have broader representation on these boards and commissions. And so I moved the appointment of Shakiba Bennett. Her resume is on our tablets, but we know her well. And we were very happy to make this nomination. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
It's about time.
I think Shakiba will be a wonderful addition. She's really a balanced, fair thinker. She's got a lot of community knowledge, and I just applaud this appointment.
As I do, and I think she'll make a terrific Police Commissioner. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
That's your answer, Tom? Tiger, we'll move to Public Works contracts.
Bill will be taking these.
All right.
Oldsmen, Building Superintendent, we have various routine maintenance contracts that we have to maintain our properties and weapons, so.
I'll start with the first one is for the heating, ventilation, air conditioning, preventive maintenance service. We did go out to bid. We, when we went out to bid, we had, I believe in this case here, about five contractors show up for the walkthrough. Only two submitted a proposal. And M. Gar Melo, who's been doing work for us for a number of years now, came in with the lower bid. All these contracts we went out for to try to have some savings with time monies were all five-year contracts. And the contract is going to be written in a way that it's before it's renewed every July first, automatically, funds would have to be approved through the budget process. As long as the funding is approved, then the contract automatically rolls into the next year. So the first contract, as you see, is going to be for the total amount with contingencies of two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two forty-two fifty. The first year being fifty-six thousand, two forty-eight fifty. And also, I had labor rates also included in the bid, so that when we do any additional work, once a P M. is work is done, they discover something wrong, we could do a time immaterial, and we already have their, what's their rates for their time. Any questions?
I have a question, if I may. Um, since the world is changing, I'm wondering about going out for five-year bids at this time, rather than one year.
One year would be more, well, I don't necessarily think anything's going to change because labor rates are what they are. That's not changing. I'm having a hard enough time trying to get people to come bid projects, and I don't think I'm going to get a whole lot of attraction with doing a one-year contract. It's difficult, a lot of these, because they are, like, for preventive maintenance, it's only twice a year. In some cases, three times a year for the air conditioning equipment. It's nice to have a company coming who knows the equipment, and then rolls into the next year. To go through a learning curve every year is kind of difficult to get everybody out to all these buildings that you know exactly where everything is.
But Bill, why wouldn't we do a two- or three-year contract?
Well, we're looking for the best savings in five years. We've seen it's been working, we've done five years before. Now I'd have to rebid it. I'm more worried about going out to rebid right now for timing and for again, again, people require everybody to come back to our buildings. Not the ideal thing to do right now, if you know.
Tiger?
You can certainly approve it for a year, two years, three years. We don't have to go the entire five. You can certainly approve the contract for one or two or three. You don't have to go the full five.
I don't, I don't know. I'd have to look into that, to be honest with you, Tiger, first, because the bids were for five years, and their understanding was they did the discounting based on five years. So I'd have to go back to the contractor and see if they're okay with doing a shorter term.
We need to do this today. Can we do it in two weeks?
No, you don't need to do it today.
But are all they're all five years?
They're all five-year, yeah, they're all five-year contracts.
You know, this is one of the things we've been looking at with our advisory committee on buildings and infrastructure is to our procurement policies, practices, and I'm not sure how I feel really about, you know, we may be going into a different economic world. So my suggestion would be we actually, you know, take this up in two weeks. We can discuss it among ourselves and see what any reason not to wait two weeks, Bill?
Excuse me?
Any reason not to wait two weeks?
Wait two weeks. I just want to make sure we have something in place before July one, when I need to start the services up.
If I may, I'm also interested, if we have these contracts that actually renew every year, is there any downside, any penalty whatsoever with not going forward?
I'm not quite following the question, I mean.
Okay, you say this contract is subject to funding approval by the town for each year.
Right.
If the town doesn't approve the funding, is there any downside?
Well, if you don't approve the funding, then the maintenance doesn't get done, period.
Yeah, Kit, we have to put that in the contracts, because we can't do, you know, everything we do is subject to budgeting funding.
Yeah, I just meant that, is there any penalty?
Well, if the funding, well, the penalty would be on us, basically. If you didn't approve the funding annually in my operating budget, then those services could not be rendered by anybody.
I understand that, but in this, in this sense, this is an option. And so I'm wondering, is there a price for it?
We'll check into that, Kit. We don't believe there's a penalty for if you don't approve a funding line, and then we would have to then negate the contract. I don't believe that there's a penalty back from the contractor to the town, but we'll review that as well.
I also wonder, given this particular business environment, how many companies are going to make it through? Who's going to be around five years?
Well, hopefully, they all would be around, and
I hope so.
You know, this is helping if we were to, you know, approve and get contracts going with these folks, that they have they have something to look forward to, and they start doing.
Yeah, Bill, when do we put these out to bid?
Back in October, after last July, when we got the approval for this year, I was asked to go out to bid and have new bids for a couple of years. So it was quite involved, went out in October. There was, you know, I had to have site visits from everybody, a lot of questions back and forth, and then we received the bids and kind of leveled them all out now, and getting ready to start the new year. We bought, we figured we'd bring them to you.
Well, actually, this is the one that we're cleaning services. We actually got a worse contract than we expected because we went out to bid.
Well, I don't know if it's considered worse. They, there was, out of the four that showed up for the walkthrough, one never came back. The third one dropped out because they would receive the contract for the new Norwalk Mall, so they couldn't handle the additional work. And it came down to the current contractor and another vendor. And the vendor and Darian, who were looking to get approved, highly qualified for the scope of the work and the size of the project, so it would be a new contract with that person. You've got to keep in mind, too, that the minimum wage is going up every year for the next five years. So that had to be calculated in also.
Am I misremembering that the, if, had we gone back to our current cleaning contractor, they might have held their price or done better, and we actually did worse by going out to bid?
Well, yes and no. I mean, they were struggling, and I've been, you know, beating them up pretty good on holding pricing. They were looking to try to increase a lot of those, some of the pricing anyhow. I guess bidding was a good thing to do to get everybody back on the right level playing field. Could we have done better, you know, maybe? We are having some, we're struggling with the current cleaning contractor, because they are, you know, they out, they, they're like, they're franchisee, they franchise it out, so the local ladies in Norwalk who bought into it, do our properties, they're looking for more money, and and I feel it, it's at the point where the service is starting to suffer a little bit, because they feel, everybody feels they need more money. So if I went and renegotiated the current contractor to carry it, I don't know how much difference it would make at this point. They've been doing it for five years, I believe now. So maybe getting some new fresh talent in these buildings might be a good idea.
Okay, well, look, this is a perfect example of why we're doing this review of our procurement and purchasing policies. And the plan is, at the next advisory committee meeting, to review in detail the draft that Lund has prepared. I, we were going to do it last meeting, but we really hadn't circulated to the members to be able to do it. So we we will review that and then bring it back in May, no, I guess June, because it'll be a selectance policy like other towns have, as opposed to a finance department guidelines. And so actually, we'll share that draft with you, with both of you, Kit and Nick, and you may want to watch the advisory committee meeting on, I'm not sure, second Monday of May. And then we will actually, that'll be beyond two weeks from the from this meeting. But I still think I'd like to take two weeks and kind of review these. I think approving something in May for July one start is Yes, Kit?
I'm sure there's a rational explanation for it, but when I was looking at the cleaning services, the percentage increase for each year seemed so much larger than than the supposed inflation rate, etc. I'm just wondering, what was the driver on that?
Labor.
But is labor going up that much, like?
It's going up, going up to fifteen dollars an hour over the next few years. And so they had to reflect that. And I mean, I can't control what they put in for numbers, that's what they did. Both of them, both contractors were, you know, close with their numbers. The current contractor, he does our seasonal stuff, and he was off his target, and we had problems with some of the numbers he was putting in. And I felt, after discussing everything, that we had to be very careful that we weren't going to contract somebody who was going to gouge the price later, claim they can't do it. So I got, you know, it was very, a lot of discussions, that's why it took a little while to get to this point here with you folks. We had to have a lot of discussions about making sure we secure the right people.
Okay, well, let's postpone this for two weeks. I'd like to discuss with Bill and Tiger the, you know, whether we would do a two- or three-year contract rather than five, and what the talk to the vendors and see what that would mean. So let's, I don't suppose we need to vote to postpone this, or I suppose we should. But actually, Tiger, I see Donnie on here. Are we, do we intend to add an item to the agenda?
No, there should have been, recycling should have been on there.
Be number five.
Number five, recycling contract.
Oh, not on my agenda, Tom, maybe I have the wrong.
Yeah, we added, we added number five on Friday.
Yeah, this is the quarter of four version on Friday. What time do we add it?
About quarter after four.
Right. Oh, I'm sorry, I have a hour old draft from Friday. Okay, sweet. But anyway, I moved, we postponed the approvals for the Public Works contracts until the next Board of Select meeting. Second?
Second year.
Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
So we will go next to what's on the agenda, now that I have a new agenda, recycling contract. Tiger? Or I, Don?
That'd be Donnie, yep.
Good morning.
Morning, Don.
We put it out to bid again. Four contractors picked it up, two of them returned with a pricing, and the lowest price was Oak Ridge for eighty-three, seventy-four a ton, to City Cardings, ninety-five a ton. And the market's still not good.
So could you give us a little more color on this?
Um, well, the other towns are still paying, as of right now, Darian's the only town getting a rebate, and it's part of their long-term contracts. Greenwich is starting to pay sixty-five dollars a ton for the first time ever. And Wilton's still paying sixty-five without a contract, and they're worried about, they don't know what the pricing's going to do at all. Because they don't have a contract.
We are doing, we are doing slightly better than what our, you know, going forward, what we were paying City for this year. So we are doing slightly better based upon the number of pulls and the quantity and the pricing for that. So we are doing better than what we were doing in July and August, but we're worse than what we were doing the previous year.
Tiger, remind me of, what are the, what are the drivers of the pricing here? The macro drivers?
You have two different things. You got to, you got to pull costs, and then you got tonnage costs. So each time they pull one of the containers, there's a cost for that, and then the tonnage cost. And the driver necessarily, still, there's not a market, you know, and while our materials might still be clean or better than most, it's going to a large-scale MRF that they have to look at it as a, as a product overall. So it's not, it's not a question of what are, what we're giving them, it's a question of what they're getting from everyone. And then having to find a market for it, the market is still bad.
Given, given that City Carding, wasn't there an issue where they wouldn't even return our calls?
Yes, and the general manager, the new general manager apologized for all that, but, you know, I already told him the damage was done. And then they tried to negotiate after the fact, when we put it back out to bid again, and I said, no, we put it out, so that's public now that they have to go out and bid with the rest of them.
And as it turns out, they weren't the low anyways. Turns out.
No, they still came up twelve dollars higher.
Do we have reason to believe that Oak Ridge Waste will be more responsive?
It's possible they're willing to work on other things, too, as we go along, so we just got to get them in here, because they have, they have a big plant in Shelton and in Danbury. They're probably the second biggest one in the area.
What is the city of Danbury? Does City of Danbury use them?
Yes.
What do they pay?
They pretty much, they pretty much have that whole area locked up, up there.
Where is City Carding, Bridgeport?
Stanford.
Any further questions for Tiger or Donnie? If not, I'll move that we approve requests from the Department of Public Works to enter into a two-year contract with Oak Ridge Waste and Recycle Danbury for an estimated two hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars per year for the hauling recyclables. Do I have a second?
Second year.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I want, actually, Donnie.
Yes.
I ask that you come back to us on the transfer station fee change, and whether or not we should consider a senior. Did we get the information?
The only town right now that's doing is Darian gives a discount to their residents for seniors.
How many, how many towns did we check with?
I checked Darian, Wilton, Westport, Weston, Richfields.
So, okay, so senior, a senior discount is not prevalent. Darian is the only, but Darian also has a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred, what's the annual fee for Darian?
One twenty-five. One twenty.
One twenty?
Yeah, it went down, one twenty.
So, you know, keep in mind, many seniors are in, are in congregate areas where they have contractual services with their rent, such as all the apartment buildings and all the condos and co-ops. So there'll be some seniors, obviously, but anyway, we're not going to bring forth a recommendation on a senior discount. One resident suggested that, and I asked Donnie to inquire what other towns are doing. We're still pretty low. If anybody has a hauling contract, they'll continue to pay forty-five dollars. If they don't have a hauling contract, and they pretty much use, they use the transfer station exclusively to bring their trash to, they they're paying seventy-five, they'll pay seventy-five dollars. So we've already published it in the newspaper. Have we? Tom? Tom Stadler?
Yes, I believe that's been published, yes.
We've already published it, so I think we still haven't taken up the parking fees, because we don't know how to adjust them yet, but we'll take that up. I'm not sure there's any other fees outstanding that we have to act on before the new fiscal year starts, but parking permits. And to some extent, the parking fees for meters and stuff, because of the state's tax on parking. Okay, so with that, we'll move up to the next item, which, just a brief discussion about the tax programs. Linda, do you want to just give a brief summary? And, you know, this is a decision for the Town Council on Wednesday night, tomorrow night. Just a brief discussion.
Sure.
I think Nick and Kit have both been following this, and there's been several meetings where it's been discussed.
Okay, so basically, you have the memo that I shared to the town, to the Town Council. The Town Council has until April twenty-fifth to make a, to choose between the two options, between the tax deferment and the low-interest program. I included in those memos some comparisons. I took an example of a twenty-thousand-dollar tax bill paid biannually, what that would be under the current plan with, before the executive order, what it would be with a deferment program, and what it would be if we went the low-interest route. So I highlighted those just as an example. And then below, I did some just initial projections of cash flow, where and where the money comes from, and how we would, how the funds would flow if we were to do any of these, any of these programs. From a cash flow perspective, it doesn't make a huge difference to the town, whether we go the deferment route or the low-interest route. Because of the amount, level of reserves that the town has, we will be able to sustain either one of those two options. And so the choice for the Town Council is just which of those choices do they think provides the most relief to the citizens? And then the choice for the Town Council also is, should they require documentation of people being impacted by COVID? Some towns have gone the document, requiring documentation. Some towns have gone to just fill out a form and say yes, and that's sufficient. And some towns have just made it a blanket to every citizen who wishes to take part, without asking them to provide any documentation. And so that's kind of a nutshell where things are. Kevin and I reviewed this. The recommendation we put forward is for the town to go with a deferment option.
And and a representation. Actually, it's targeted toward two levels. If you're an individual taxpayer, you have to represent that you have been affected, your income has been affected, is down twenty percent or more. And for commercial business, you have to represent the year you've been affected by the COVID crisis, and your income is down thirty percent or more.
So it's a representation warranty without documentation. It's just, I represent
Right.
X, Y, Z.
Right, the, on the governor's calls, you know, the staff of the Budget Office up there has been saying they don't, they think people should just take taxpayers' word for a representation. I understand from conversations with Wilton, Darian, that they're going to ask for backup document and warn people that the information is subject to FOIA, which I'm not even sure it is, but I personally don't think it's necessary to have our taxpayers provide backup documentation. But that's something, it's actually not our decision. Todd Labriary joined us in terms of making this recommendation, so it's not just Linda and me. And the Town Council will be taking it up tomorrow night.
Right. Well, you know, Kevin, I agree with that way forward. I think you know, backup documentation, I think, is ridiculous.
Okay, so actually, I just like to ask, who is two oh three eight one seven two eight one seven, one two seven eight?
That's Mike, I think.
Like that?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, no one from the advertiser on here? I suppose you can be watching seventy-nine, okay. So with that, that was just intended to be a brief discussion, and have us, I don't think it's necessary for us to make a recommendation to the Town Council unless you feel you want to.
Kevin?
Did I jump over the rent relief, actually, so we'll go back to it. But anyway, do you want to, do you want to make a recommendation to the Town Council? Yeah, I don't, you know, it's interesting, in other towns, because of the governor's order, this would be a recommendation by the Board of Finance to the Board of Selectmen. But since we have a legislative body that can meet, it's a legislative body decision. And other towns, and I, I think there's some ambiguity here, because if you have a town, the governor's order was intended to avoid having to have a town meeting where everybody shows up to approve a budget. Some towns, like Darian and Greenwich, and I'm not sure about Westport, have representative town meetings, and I understand there's going to be, they have a hundred members down in Darian, they're going to have a virtual meeting to approve it, so. But our role in this, because of the fact that we have a twelve-member Town Council, is we don't have, we don't have a vote. And I'm not sure it makes sense for us to make a recommendation to the Town Council, unless you want to. I didn't, I didn't tee it up as a voting matter, but we can this is a regular meeting.
I'm good, I'm good without it as well, Kit. And, but I, I, I do think this is the right way forward, Kevin, having, you know, tax deferral. Without documentation.
Okay, Kit?
Yes.
So on that, on that, I would actually like to, first of all, well, where's our budget discussion on the agenda? I guess we, we should have amended the agenda to add a budget discussion.
We can bring it up later, we can bring it up at the end with your omnibus discussion.
Okay, okay, very good. So let's go back to rent relief. I, you know, but there's been a lot of discussion in town about what can be done to help our local taxpayers and especially our downtown merchants. And as you know, we're, we're, we are a landlord for several town-owned properties. And there's a list on your tablets of several tenants such as, uh, the Chamber of Commerce and Earth Gardens and New Canaan Cares, which are in Playhouse upstairs in Playhouse, or I'm sure the lower level for Earth Gardens. And, um, the, in the Town Hall Annex upstairs is the New Canaan, New England Academy of Dance. And, um, I don't know, what is Time to Shine?
Time to Shine is, is the.
Hey, Linda or Tom?
To watch shop over the train station.
Yeah.
Oh, well, that's closed. So actually, the other, and then on the tablets, there were two actual mistakes. One, there is no property leased with the New Canaan Library. There's some data lines and things that they reimburse us for. And, um, and then Waving the Care Center and Bankwell. Waving the Care is due in June and I think we ought to have a discussion with Waving the Care Center. They have a rather modest annual rent that has been in effect for the forty... fifty years, forty-seven years. It has been adjusted in the past, but, and then Bankwell pays twice a year and their payment is, is, is due, but I think we ought to have discussions directly with those institutions because they're much larger and it's not a monthly rent. But my, my proposal would be to show that the town wants to help our downtown merchants and our, our nonprofits especially by having a, a moratorium on rent for, for ninety days for April through June. Actually, I, I think I'd make it through the July one payment. We didn't catch April, so we have heard from both the New England Academy of Dance and from Bautai Cinemas. Bautai Cinema has actually sent us a lawyer's letter asking whether or not we're taking the position that the force majeure clause comes into play. We don't agree with that necessarily, but I, I don't think we need to debate that with them and I think we ought to be generous. They have no revenues, they're closed and it's, it's not quite fair to be charging rent for space in a, in a time of crisis. We want these, these tenants to be in business four months or six months or now. And so, you know, we are going to give up some modest amounts of revenue. But I think, I think it's the right thing to do and it's also, I'd like to, you know, show our community landlords that they need to perhaps look at giving some moratorium relief to their tenants because we want to preserve our merchants and our nonprofits in town and anything that can be done to help consistent with their obligations to bank lenders, et cetera, that they ought to try to do as well. So, um, before I make a motion, I mean, do you have any questions or do you have any thoughts on this?
No, Kevin, I agree with this. Just to be clear for everybody, this is not a rent deferral. This is a rent abatement for those two or three months.
Well, I should, Kit, or Nick, I, I use the word moratorium for a reason. It really doesn't, I'm not waive, we're not going to waive the rent. We will discuss it in ninety days and see if, you know, chances are we'll probably defer it further. But I, I don't want to necessarily say we're wa, 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 wa,
We've been incurring maybe $80,000 to date of COVID-related expenses, which we hope will be reimbursed by FEMA. I have a department managers meeting at 9:30. I'm going to ask the department managers to document their 10 largest COVID-related expenses and the explanation of them. This is sort of an audit so that we'll be prepared to make sure it was on the same page as to what they're recording so that we have documentation ready to make a FEMA claim. So I would, Tom, I'd ask that, we ask the department managers to send to you their top 10 from March 15 to April 15. And that's a budget note. Oh, okay. Thank you. So moving to general matters. I actually probably should have suggested we add to the, to the agenda. I'll be happy to talk about anything you want to, but as you, did either one of you check in last night to the town council finance committee meeting? They had a two and a half hour meeting last night. We covered a number of subjects. There is a lot of concern that we cut back spending, both on the town council and the board of finance. And so at the town, at the, Linda has prepared a draft expenditure budget and revenues budget through April 16. It's unusual. We do mid-month financials, and so it's a good bit of work to get the department managers to make estimates through June, both with respect to revenues and expenses. I plan to talk to each of the department managers about their, Linda, do you want to sort of give a brief summary of what this represents and then we can discuss it further?
Sure. So, so what we did is we looked at, on the operating budget side, looked at where year-to-date was, we did this in mid-April. But I sent out to departments their line item revenues and their line item expenditure lines and to just kind of give us a sense of where they think they'll end at the end of the year. Obviously, with, with some of the buildings being closed, there are some things that we're not going to spend on. There are some programs, for example, recreation, that are not going to take place and therefore expenses related to those programs, like the part-time help, those expenses go away. But likewise, some of those programs bring in revenues and therefore the revenues that's associated with these, with those programs also go away. We looked at our property tax revenues, which is our biggest revenue source, to kind of see where, where those are. So we looked at that where it was as of mid-April. I talked to Roseanne to see how much of the taxes were outstanding and did a preliminary projection on those. Obviously, these numbers will, these projections will change as we get closer to the end of the year. They become more and more refined. At this point, with 12 weeks out almost before the end of the year, it's difficult to know. I asked also the board of ed to kind of provide their numbers to see where they thought they would end the year, given the school closures, but also the additional expenses related to the e-learning and so forth. And so they provided some of those estimates. So that's what you have in front of you. Again, these are preliminary numbers, but it's just an attempt to kind of see where, where things are. The big unknown and what I, we've started to separate in the draft, in the preliminary document that you have, if you, on the numbered one that I sent late last night, on page nine, we, we itemized COVID expenses. We created these COVID accounts for each department and we asked each department to start tracking those COVID expenses and we're charging them to those accounts. And so we did a year-to-date where we were in those accounts and also to kind of estimate where we'll be. As you know, it's, it's really difficult to know for expenses like COVID because we don't know what the demands are on a day-to-day basis. You know, if you're in all those calls with Mike Handler, there's discussions about possibly for some of our public works, employees under emergency workers, if it gets to a point where we may have to contain them in hotels so that they don't go home and spread the germs to their families and so forth. And so that's a big unknown. We haven't pulled that trigger, but we do have, we do have a hotel on standby should we need to do so. But you may be looking at booking a, a block of rooms for an extended period of time to house some of our employees. That may happen, that may not happen. It's, it's very difficult to project something like that. And so, so what you have in front of you is kind of a best guess at this time as to what that will be. For the board of finance, at the last meeting we had, we did not have March financials then. They've asked that we do, we include April financials, which we will, and therefore we'll do another, another look at this for the May meeting of the board of finance, which will include spending as of the end of April. And those will be reconciled numbers with the board of ed. An interesting piece of this also is that we also send tax statements, delinquent statements go out in April, and those have gone out. And so hopefully by the end of April, we'll also get a better read on where we expect to end as far as tax revenues, which is our biggest revenue driver.
Hey, Linda, Linda, on the delinquencies, has there been an uptick in the number of delinquencies?
No. Rose sent me a number, sent me her sheet today. And last year, when we sent the April delinquencies, we had about $1.4 million that was delinquent. This year's April statements are actually 1.2. So it's actually down 200 year over year. And so, so yeah, so in terms of where we are in terms of property tax revenues for this fiscal year, we're pretty close to what we've, we, where we would be, just because on the cycles, we typically get rents, tax revenues in June, July, and then January. And so by the time when COVID hit, most of those obligations as far as property taxes were, people had committed to them. And so it does not impact to that extent to our revenue. So I think for the year in terms of revenue impacts on the tax revenue, it's going to be minimal. The biggest hit we're seeing on revenues is on building permits. This was something that we had been watching even before COVID, if you recall, in some of the sessions I've done with the board of finance. But right now, Brian is projecting that number. He's, he's downgraded the revenue projections on that. We had a budget of $900,000. Right now, we're projecting possibly 600 in total building permits, just based on what he knows. Again, we'll keep refining this. And then the other one is the conveyance fees. This is one where we had begun to see downward trends even last year, and it was trending downwards this year. But projecting it towards, for the year end, we're also projecting to be slightly down this year than we were, than we were last year. And so to the extent that we over-collect in years, that over-collection is having to make up for some of these downfalls in these other big-ticket items. When previous years, we would over-collect in property taxes because of the collection rate, but we would also be close to budget on building permits and conveyance fees. This year, we're seeing a downtick in those areas. And so that's eating up some of that additional revenues that we historically get from property taxes.
So you're dropping building permits from 900,000 to 600?
As of now, yes. I had discussion with Brian, that's what, that's what he's, he's estimating. And he did a very, a really thorough job because he looked at the permits that are in place, the permits that are in progress. He thinks it may go up, but for now, that's the number he's comfortable with. We're going to look at this again at the end of the month in May and revise, revise that number.
And, and for the record, conveyance fees are being dropped from $1 million to 75 to $1 million?
Correct. I actually had that number even lower than that, but we're going to monitor it. But I talked to Claudia and just what she's seen in the town clerk's office, and she thinks let's put a million for now. But again, we'll look at it, we'll look at that year-to-date where things are by April. With the weather, as it gets warmer, you typically have a bit more property exchanges in the winter time. That's just kind of how it's trended historically. So we'll see again in May how that looks.
Hey, so Linda, in the COVID expenditures, you've got a line item for other, the last line item in the block, other COVID-19 non-salary expenses for $100,000. What does that comprise of?
That's just my dark, in the dark. I don't know. As I mentioned, we talked about hotel rooms. You saw in the paper, the fire chief says that he's anticipating $30,000 in overtime. Those numbers, if you'll see, they're not in those numbers. If you look at the fire line, you don't capture that 30,000. And so that will absorb some of those expenses that, that we don't yet know. And so, you know, we may well be under that. But, but yeah, but that's a placeholder for now.
We expect hopefully that FEMA will reimburse legitimate COVID expenses.
Right.
To 70. Has there been any movement on the 75% to 100%? The governor, the mayor state has 100%.
The governor Lamont has, I think they call it, I think the technical word is appeal. And so he's put that in and we haven't heard back to get 100 as opposed to the 75. But the reimbursements we get from these will be reflected, they'll probably come next fiscal year, possibly. And Bill can say more on the timeline because he's been through this before. But these will be additional revenues in the following year's budget that we didn't budget for because we don't have FEMA reimbursements in the next fiscal year budget. So that's when we'll see the, the revenues come in.
Nick, you may recall with the storm Sandy, we had $400,000 of reimbursement from FEMA.
Can I just add, this, this FEMA event is going to require us to file quarterly so that they can get payments out quarterly. I say quarterly, if I file quarterly, maybe the next quarter, payments may start coming in. I'm working through that now with FEMA and, and tracking, so.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I want to audit these first month from March 15. I, I'm not sure when the, the FEMA order came, presidential order came down, but up to April 15th and then we'll, we'll see, you know, make sure everybody's on the same page as to what they're calling COVID expenses. And Tom Stadler, I'd like you to do that with Bill Ospina and Linda and so we can have a handle on that. As far as the, is it, the department manager meeting has been moved to 10 o'clock. So, but these are, these are just estimates. This is not a budget. This is something the town, the board of finance asked us to look at. In my view, the, the board of selectmen manages the budget once it's been approved, as I told the town council. When they approve the budget for next year, a budget is an authorization to spend, it's not a mandate to spend. And there's a lot of sentiment, especially on the town council, but also among many members of the board of finance, that we need to cut back drastically. I think Stanford is seeing a significant shortfall in revenues and plans to cut spending significantly. So what I plan to do is also ask the department managers at our meeting today to give me a listing of the top 10 capital projects by date of priority and so we can make the decisions now and not wait until the board of finance meets in, whenever they meet in May. And I indicated to both the board of finance and the town council that we'll take all the advice they want to give us, but these are decisions for the board of selectmen on the budget because we now manage the budget for the rest of this year and, and the budget coming into play for July 1. So that being said, do you want to talk about other topics?
Well, you know, getting back to budget and unusual circumstances, Linda, I know you weren't in, in town then, but I think Kevin and I discussed, maybe you were going to go back and see what happened in 2008 as an indicator of what we might be able to do now.
Well, actually, Linda surprised, went back 20 years on our tax receipts and why don't you summarize with that 20-year history?
Even better.
Yes. So what, what I did was I did a 20-year look back at property tax revenues, which covered the, the downturn in '01 and also the downturn in '08, '09. As far as our property tax revenues, they actually, in all of the, in all of that 20-year time period, exceeded 99%. I think the dip we got, it was in, I think it was after the '08 reception in '08, but then a lot of that was recaptured that following year.
When you say dip, what was the dip? What was the nature of the dip?
Dip means we went from a 99%, in excess of 99% collection rate, and I think that year we dropped to 98.8 or 98.7. And so it, it wasn't significant at all. And so what I did was I averaged the entire time period and we were, we're still at like 99.5% collection rate in a, on a 20-year average. But even those, like I said, even that small dip, that half a percent dip in that year, we caught up with that in that following year because those people that were delinquent or that didn't pay, paid up the following year. So we were made whole within those two years, the full complement of taxes were paid, it was just delayed receipts.
How do we think this crisis is different than the past 20 years?
And, and we don't know, just because when, with this particular crisis hit, we were already kind of past the tax collections for the prior year. And so this year is not a, a good indicator. What we would like to see, what will, what will be the telling sign will be July and August. I think two things we'll know at that point is, because the executive order exempts escrowed accounts from the delay. However, it did say on there, if, if a borrower showed that they've been impacted by COVID between them and the borrower, and there were, there were some arrangements on their taxes, those payments could be delayed to the town. And so we will know by mid-July, the level of escrow revenues that we get, if that stays consistent, or if there's a number of property owners that are impacted even with their escrow. So that'll be the first indicator. I think the second indicator will be how many of our taxpayers take advantage of whatever plan the town council puts forward. Because it's not, it's not mandatory. You know, we've estimated 25% of residents will, will just continue to pay as usual and not necessarily take the delay. But, but we'll see. And I think those will be.
Yeah, Linda, Linda, we didn't estimate, we guesstimated.
We guessed.
We have no idea, we have no idea.
We have no idea.
Yeah.
And so that's when we'll know.
But sure, the worst, worst case, worst case is the 75% of the non-escrow people don't pay their taxes in July. I think that's probably, Linda wanted to use the 10% or 90%, which I thought was kind of crazy. So it's, it's a guess.
So, so with respect to the escrowed accounts, in order for there to be a deviation from that contractually negotiated arrangement between mortgageor and mortgager, there has to be, they have to go to the bank and say, hey, I want to change this or?
Yeah, I, I think, I think banks don't generally agree to that. I think the, the taxes have already been collected in the first six months of this year for the July payment. So I don't, I think, my guess is the banks will almost universally pay everything that's, that's escrowed. If there's been an arrangement, it may be for the month of May and June, possibly April, in which case we'll get not the full amount, but I think escrow agents will turn over what they have for the six months prior to July 1. And that's $20 million if, if there was no decrement in that. And on top of our, what we estimate to be maybe a 28, $29 million general fund balance at the end of June, we're, we're coming into this crisis with a very healthy general fund balance, which quite honestly is the, the reason that the town council, you know, rich, rich towns would give, give back $10 million rather than $5 million to the taxpayer for the, which I don't think the board of finance would agree with. But there's a lot of sentiment to be more generous to our taxpayers this year when they need it. And so I'm, I'm in favor of that, anything we can do to, to lower our mill rate and help our taxpayers this year, we ought to be generous.
But Linda, what percentage of the, the mortgages in town are escrowed? Do we know that?
About 30, 32 to 35%.
Now, there's also another factor here that we haven't heard about yet, but the federal government has given the state of Connecticut $1.5 billion as part of the CARES Act, and they intend to distribute that down to the cities and towns to some extent. The, the state also has a $2.8 billion rainy day fund. So I will, I suspect what we're going to hear soon is that the state is sending down money mainly to the cities to help with their, their budgets and their, and I, from what I've seen in the news, they're, they're talking about any further relief to be more aid to the states and municipalities. So again, fortunately, we come into this crisis with a much more healthy general fund balance and can afford to, to be more generous.
So what are you thinking from a budgetary standpoint going forward, Kevin, in terms of cutting costs?
I'm not even thinking about July yet. I, I, I think how we look at the world in mid-May versus mid-June will be a lot different. And, but for now, we have to think about what we can do in the next 70 days. And, and we, you know, actually, you know, the, the numbers here, Linda, what's the board of education estimate for their savings in the?
In this, perform as 750,000. When I talked to Dr. Lutze and Dr. Keating, they were saying possibly anywhere between 650 to a million. But again, these are guesstimates.
And where are those savings coming from?
I did not get the line item information, but we could, we could definitely ask.
I think we should ask.
Not that we have much control over, but on the other hand, it's nice to see that, that larger number. On the town side, we have significant estimated savings. But I would note too, you know, we probably in an ordinary year would have come out this year with a million and a half to $2 million over collection of revenues and over budget, under budget spending as we did last year. Was the number last year $2 million on the town side, Linda? 2.9 million the year before?
Yeah, close to that.
And, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to have that full savings this year because we have to make up for a, a error we made in that budgeting for the library's health insurance for two years, this year and last year. So that's almost a million dollars altogether. So the final, the final general fund balance will reflect that, making up that million-dollar unbudgeted number for healthcare for the library for two years. So I, I would make a few remarks about the great work that our emergency operations team is doing, not only with respect to protecting our first responders and also helping our residents when they're in need for this, getting to the hospital. And we are, have a terrific grocery shopping program for our seniors. Ironically, back in January, when we created a survey of our seniors for the human services department to understand what services we provide to our seniors, we have a database that has been very useful to know exactly which, which seniors live where. And we've been able to target meals. The school district is preparing meals daily now for 150 students. Actually, they just extended it to younger people as well, K through four. And they also, Cheryl? And they, and they, we're delivering meals to certain selected Congress, like for example, schoolhouse apartments. They, the school district took over the Meals on Wheels program last week because the Meals on Wheels is primarily senior volunteers who deliver the meals. So the school district has really kicked in with their support for the town. And we also have purchased, I think, 29,000 masks, surgical masks, and we are in the process, surprisingly FEMA has a program that, that if you ask your state emergency regional coordinator to have FEMA deliver masks, cloth masks to residents, they will have them delivered. We hope they are good with their words, that they'll deliver by the end of the week cloth masks to all of our residents. I'll believe it when I see it. But I, but they say they will. And in the meantime, we are trying to figure out how to distribute 29,000 surgical masks to our residents. And we are either going to have the U.S. Postal Service do it, which has been a huge night, red tape nightmare to try to get approval, or we probably will have a, a point where people can pick them up someplace downtown, such as Saks Middle School. That is still in the works. So between the support we've given our seniors and the, the support our first responders have got, you may have seen the report about, we're trying to honor a tradition that the schools have to have birthday celebrations for fifth and sixth graders, that we're, we're doing that with our emergency, our first responders, driving by people's homes. And the, there's a lot of talk about next steps. I've had conversations with Tucker Murphy about the chamber creating some kind of business advisory group that would help us through the process of reopening, especially the downtown New Canaan. And I don't want it to be a town committee per se, but I'd like, I'd like to see a private sector group do that. And what else? Any questions about the COVID response?
Yeah, with respect, go ahead, Kim.
You go ahead, Nick. I was just going to say that it's such a, go ahead, Nick.
Ladies first.
I was just going to say that it's a remarkable time to be a resident in New Canaan because I cannot imagine a better, more thought-filled, heartfelt response than, than we're receiving here.
Agreed.
I agree.
Hey, Kevin, I'd like to, you know, mention you. I don't think if any first electman in this town's history has had to go through what you've gone through. And we were on top, you were on top of this early. We were one of the first towns to kind of close things up. We closed the parks, we closed the restaurants, obviously crib side delivery excluded, but I think you've done a phenomenal job. You've been working 24/7 and you've done an amazing job. And I thank you for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Nick.
So one last thing I have is that I'm going to show this. That's the EMS numbers over the last 15 years, which are, it's NICVAC, which are, which are, which are going down. And I think there's a similar trend amongst the fire volunteers. And I know there's been some discussions in town about incentives to EMS and fire volunteers. And, you know, I'm very much in favor of exploring those incentives because, I mean, my gosh, the, the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we save by having a volunteer, NICVAC, and, and a volunteer fire company to augment our paid people is, is really significant. So anything we can do to incentivize new members, I think is, is a good thing financially and also the right thing to do socially.
I agree.
And unless we have anything further to discuss, I'd like to end on the note of thanking all our first responders, both the ambulance corps, which is, does remarkable work in this kind of environment where you have to be very careful, as all medical workers do, the police and the firemen, and, and also the people that work in the supermarkets and the, the gas stations and the pharmacies. There's a lot of heroes out there who are going to work every day and supporting people who are potentially affected, infected. And this is a very, very dangerous, quickly spreading virus, and we've come through it relatively well when you compare ourselves to the other towns. The, the seniors have obviously been hugely impacted, especially the nursing homes where unfortunately, it's based on a business model where a number of workers work in multiple facilities and can, early on, perhaps not be as, as protective as they might be. And so there's been a number, I think the whole, total number of seniors in nursing homes that have died in Connecticut is 400 or so, which is a real tragedy, but this is the kind of virus that it's very, very hard to protect people. And also I want to give a shout out to some amazing volunteers. For example, Grace Farms who came, stepped up and bought $2.5 million of protective equipment and have, we delivered through our fire, our volunteer firemen to, I think, 14 towns and cities, to the hospitals and the first responders, PPP, PPE, which wasn't available in the first few weeks of this crisis. And Grace Farms did a remarkable thing to facilitate that sourcing. And Grace Farms did a remarkable thing to facilitate that, uh, sourcing the, uh, sourcing materials from, uh, out of the country. And, uh, without that, we probably would have more, uh, peripheral county exposure than we've had. So, um, there's a lot of first responders and heroes to thank and to recognize. And I really, uh, I want to end with that note today. And our, all of our town employees, you know, we've, uh, been operating in, in absolutely remarkable circumstances to try to get through this. And I want to thank everybody for their dedication, hard work, and especially as I said earlier, Dr. Brian Lutzey, uh, has done a remarkable job with the Board of Education, support, the school district support for the town. And I, my condolences again to Brian for his father, which is a tragedy. So. Anything further?
Not here.
Not here.
With that, we will, I, I don't think we ever got any comments other than a couple of questions from the press. I, I don't want to leave anyone off. So did anyone get any emails that were comments from, uh? I don't think so. Anyway, for those watching on Channel 79, we wish you a good day and at 9:43 we make motion to adjourn.
Second year.
Okay. Thank you all.
Stay safe, everybody.